I call this meeting over. Please sign up for cell phones so we can conduct our business and stay in the communication given by council member.
Thank you, Councilor. Please join me in the words of that.
Father of our heaven, how we have a name that came to come, that will be done. Mayers, as it doesn't happen, goodness sustain our daily bread and forgive us such trespasses as we forgive those who just exist against us. Lean to salvation's temptation, look for us from evil.
The pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All speakers should have signed up in advance. Please state your name and address before beginning the debate. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. Councillor will not engage in debate with the speaker. First bell, you have thirty seconds left. Second bell, your time is up.
John Roach?
Gotta get my timer out. Hold on, John.
You're fine.
Oh, I gotta find a clock.
John Roach, one sixteen Grandview Terrace. One comment. Next time they have a groundbreaking ceremony for something, maybe we could do it for a couple hundred dollars rather than close to ten thousand. Personally, I thought that might have been on the excessive side for a ceremony that most people didn't know was going on and the vast majority of the city didn't attend. There might have been other circumstances, but I just thought that might have been on the excessive side. But I have a question for the City Council President because everything gets addressed to him. We're going to do, the city's going to do a traffic study. And part of that, from the press release was reduce reliance on single occupancy vehicles and multimodal transportation options. What are we talking about there in real English? Are we talking maybe a bus service or reducing your reliance on single occupancy vehicles? Are we talking limiting the number of cars that can drive around with just one person? The release was not real clear. And what are you talking about? I know that you probably couldn't answer that directly. We'll have to refer it.
We don't debate when you speak.
Oh, no, no, I'm just saying, I know that you might not be able to answer it. You might have to refer it to somebody else. Thank you very much.
That's all.
Any response from the council members? Rachel, did you?
Yes, so I'll certainly address.
Multimodal?
Well, I'd like to address the expense for the police station. So the city does not have a public relations professional on staff. However, for such a monumentous, once-in-a-hundred-years groundbreaking for the police station, we felt it would be appropriate to bring in a public relations service firm to help us with all the media, the press releases, the speeches, the run a show, inviting the elected officials and doing all the groundwork because we don't have staff to put that together. So the majority of that expense also included a tent for a thousand dollars, a seventy-five-hundred contract with Earl Wells from E3 Communications, as well as some other smaller various items like photography and other things. So I thought it was a good use of expenses because we don't have that public relations professional in our office to put on events like this because they're very rare. The city's not putting on events often. So the second item, so multimodal means walking, bicycles, potentially ride share like Uber and other things of that nature. And just looking at things like the Ellicott Trail and other trails where we might be able to encourage more, more people to be on bicycles, to be walking, to have ride share to and from work and things of that nature. So out of the entire study, we're mostly looking forward to looking at traffic patterns, traffic calming measures, and other connectors to various parts of the city that make it safe to walk and bicycle.
Anyone else?
But there's no intention to limit the.
And there's no bus service involved in it in any way.
No, but there's no intention to limit automobiles to multi-persons within the vehicle. We're not gonna.
No, we won't have, what do they call it?
High occupancy vehicles.
High occupancy vehicle lanes.
Sound sixty.
No.
The impression I got when I read it was that we're trying to open up other areas of transportation to make it safe to use your bicycle, to make it safe to walk, and to take that into traffic control areas, to make that, take that into consideration. So that's where I was thinking of it. And I thought at the groundbreaking, there was a lot more than a few people there. There was, I mean, I remember looking out into the crowd and it went back sixty yards deep and there was people all over there. It was quite, quite well attended. And also, it's celebrating for the police department as well for having waited forty-some years and being promised the police station. I thought we should have done something with it to make it look like it was, that we were taking it seriously, which we are. So it was a big event for me, it was a big event for them, it was a big event for the city, and everyone was invited and a lot of people did attend. So I agree that we'd like to try to do things with a little less expense in the future, but it is what it is and we'll learn from it and move on.
Yeah, Rachel, I'd like to just address a study and one of the things you can possibly relay to the people. Public education involving bicycles and e-bikes is becoming very important. I had people complaining to me about people riding bicycles in the street. Well, they're supposed to, they're not supposed to ride a bicycle in the sidewalk, but yet people are zipping around town on their e-bikes on sidewalks, which is forcing pedestrians, people that are seriously walking, to get out of the way, you know? I mean, some of these e-bikes are, they're supposed to have a limit of twenty-eight miles an hour. Well, twenty-eight miles an hour on an e-bike on the sidewalk is a pretty dangerous operation. So we really need to get the education out and deal with that. Hopefully, with some better education, we can resolve. Thank you.
When I jump on, Bob, with education, we should educate the people who wear light clothes instead of all these dark clothes. I say two out of ten, white clothes and everyone else is in dark clothes and you can barely see if it's an e-bike or a bike or a walk.
Good idea.
I mean, a little common sense would go a long way with these people just wearing colors.
You know what's really effective? Now they sell these little strobe lights. I have them on my bicycle and you can see them in a brightest day. You can set them upright and they're flashing light and then people know where to run you off the road.
They're the best, they're the best to get.
But it's all public education, there's no doubt about it.
But this is about a study of the traffic patterns and such so that we can, am I correct? I mean, did I read that right?
Yeah.
So studying the patterns will look for areas to improve on those safe lanes of travel and be able to walk safer and drive your bike and get across town. It's a healthy way to do it. And if it, if it's easy to do, I think more people will do it. So that's, that's the impression I got from.
And the e-bike point may not be for this. It may be something where we partner with schools and other, other folks with the fire department or police department just to talk about traffic safety. So it's not a bad idea, just might not be directly related to this, but something else we do.
One's a traffic study and one is a need for more education, so.
We've definitely seen the same thing with e-bikes. I didn't mean to look away, Councilmember Baikowski was looking at the fire chief because there was an incident with an e-bike many months ago. Everyone was fine.
Eric and I witnessed it.
Eric and Gina witnessed it. But yeah, they do, they, they cross without looking and that, you know, it's difficult to police. So it's definitely something that education would be great for, just like driver's education.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any, I don't see any communications that any get added to that statement.
No, that's fine.
Next city council meeting will be held Monday, December ninth, twenty twenty-four, seven p.m. City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. Today we have a public hearing for Restore New York Harvester. So can I have a motion to open a public hearing? Mr. Beely, seconded by Mr. Baikowski. Call her own, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes. Okay, I'll read this. The city of Batavia will hold a public hearing at seven p.m. and it's for the purpose of hearing public comments on submitting an application for grant funding Round Nine Restore New York Program Grant Program. A public hearing on the application of properties involved. And there's a list of properties in Harvester Avenue with building numbers and so on and I believe they're square feet. So that clears that up. Anyone want to speak for the public hearing?
John Roach.
Just please state your name before giving the statement. You'll be limited to the same five minutes. Please only address the actual topic we're talking about, which is the grant. And you'll have thirty seconds after you raise the first bell for stop. Go ahead.
John Roach, one sixteen Grandview Terrace in Batavia. I don't mind the idea of the grant. It's probably not the worst idea in the world. I would like some reassurance that we'll watch this real, real careful. We once before helped out the Harvester complex when it was owned by somebody else. The city helped get grant money and they ripped down Macy Mall. At that time, we were told if you take down the old Macy Mall, business would boom in that area. Some of the buildings had some new fronts put up, but business didn't really boom. I think some of us are still waiting for that to happen. I just like to be reassured that when these buildings are demolished, something more happens than we just helped out the owner to get rid of some buildings that apparently is being cited for. Again, Macy Mall, the last time, wasn't too reassuring that this won't happen again. We just helped somebody out get rid of some buildings and nothing else happened. Thank you.
I do have one comment that was received via email because it is a public hearing. I won't read it, but I will include it in the minutes. It was received on November twenty-second from John Ognabin on Seneca Ave. The sentiment is that the Restore New York grant should not be used to demolish, demolish buildings for parking lots, but I will include the rest of it in the minutes.
Okay, Rachel, just correct me if I'm wrong, but all these buildings are in a dilapidated, unsafe condition and the reason we're trying to go this route is to make sure that we get rid of basically hazardous conditions over there?
So the owner of the Harvester campus that was purchased a few years ago has been cited for multiple buildings that do need to come down for unsafe conditions. Separately, he's working with the economic development arm of the city with Tammy Hathaway and this grant came up as an opportunity. So there's two totally separate actions occurring. One is city code enforcement is working with the owner to cite large unsafe structures. And then conversely, we have the BDC working with the owner on redevelopment plans, one of which would include demolition of certain buildings that happened to also be mentioned in the codes case.
Is, are any of these buildings, and there's probably sixty percent of the entire Harvester complex, looks like it's cited for demolition, are any of these buildings occupied by businesses now?
So if you look at the parcels on your map that are dark in color, none of these that I'm aware of have any operating business in them, nor do any of the front buildings, some of them labeled in blue, do not either. So I know when I worked in economic development, we toured companies around, they're just not viable solutions for any existing businesses right now. I think the goal isn't just for parking. I think it's courtyard space. I think it's rebuilding possible housing, market rate tenant housing in there. And then the parcel on Swan Street would also be a prime parcel for redevelopment as well. And now you've opened up the campus to do that and you've kind of been able to connect through School Street downtown to uptown Harvester campus.
And if, if this is, the plan is redevelopment for housing and all that, isn't this, wouldn't this be a brownfield?
Potentially. So the site on Swan was cleaned up to nineteen ninety standard, so it'd need to be retested, probably cleaned again to today's residential standard is my guess, but I'm not an expert. Brownfield, they might apply for historic tax credits, might be eligible for some of the buildings as well, new market tax credits, opportunity zone. There's, there's a lot that can be done here. This is the owner's first, I guess, economic development attempt to start making progress on the campus.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else like to speak? Okay, motion to end executive session. Mr. Beely, seconded by Mr. Twitchell. Call her own, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes. Restore New York Round Nine Application Harvester Campus.
Yes, thank you, Council President. As we've just kind of discussed, the Batavia Business Development Corporation and Tammy have been working with several property owners across the city over the last year and has recommended that the city support the Restore New York Round Nine Grant Application for a million dollars. The potential cost for the project isn't completely finalized, but it's going to be between eight and twelve million dollars for demolition of these buildings. As you may know, the Harvester campus is twenty-nine acres, a million square feet of building, mostly which house manufacturing. Some of the buildings are still being used as incubator space, mainly in Building One in the front. And the yellow building nineteen houses Merrill Lynch, but there's a lot of the campus that's underutilized or unutilized and we see a lot of potential there. So the application consists of the campus owner's plan to demolish six buildings. The six buildings are listed here as Buildings Four, Five, Twenty-One, Twenty, Thirteen, and Eight. Where the arrows are, those are buildings that have been cited as well by city codes as being in poor condition. And, and when we cite them, we're not saying they have to be demolished. They need a structural engineering report to make a determination whether you're going to rehab it or demolish it. So we're moving that forward and this would come to the next business meeting, which is December ninth, if you so choose.
Comments? Questions?
Is Building Three, if there's an arrow pointing to that, is that cited for demolition?
Three, so where the arrows are, are the buildings that have been cited by the city's codes office.
Oh, okay.
Right? And then the buildings that are listed in the resolution are the buildings that they're looking to apply for grant money for.
So from my map, it looks like all the buildings in the brown demolition area, mark areas, brown areas are, not all of them are coming out, but several in there are the ones listed on this resolution that we did a public hearing. Building Four, Five, Twenty-One, Twenty, Thirteen, and Eight are all in that area. Three is in a future development, redevelopment area, but it is cited according to the arrow on the map.
And Five, everyone will remember is the former Melton's Building. I was in there maybe in twenty nineteen. It's a great building, but structurally with the roof, it certainly needs repairs. It needs to be, to be looked at and I don't know what uses it would have in today's economy. It can't be clean room space unless they rehab the whole thing. We have a transload warehouse, so they're going to have to be more creative. They're going to have to look at housing, artisan uses, outdoor courtyards, and small business and maybe supporting the nanotechnology industry as that's growing across New York State. There could be clean, clean labs, clean room space there. There's a lot of opportunity. It's just not industrial businesses that are going to come operate here anymore, in my opinion.
Anyone else? So we consensus to move that resolution to the December business meeting for the vote. Accept New York Grant Funds for 105 Batavia Incorporated Cars Project.
Thank you, Council President. The city was successful in assisting the Cars Reborn Project with a one point eight five million dollar Restore New York application. The city is a pass-through for these funds and needs to accept the award and enter into an undertaking agreement with 105 Inc., which is the property developer. The project will create fourteen new upper floor market rate apartments. So you have two resolutions in front of you, one accepting the funds, which were awarded about a year and a half ago and it's under construction, and number two, entering into the undertaking agreement, which ensures that the developers and construction company provide the product they said they would as applicable to the grant terms.
What is the, what's the resolution for amending the budget? Is that so we can accept the grant and then pass it through? Is that the reason that? So resolution executed under State Development Restoring New York Grant for Cars and to amend the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. So there's a resolution like you said.
Yep, we amend the budget to recognize that the revenue will come through and then be expended in grant accounts.
And there's a copy of the undertaking agreement right here in the panel.
We have executed other undertaking agreements very similar to this with Restore New York programs in the past.
Right. Any questions or concerns on that? So we consensus to move accepting and undertaking both to the December Day Business Meeting. Can it move? Water meters?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I recommend that the city of Batavia authorize the borrowing of up to two point five million dollars for the replacement of thirty-eight hundred water meters across the city. As you're aware, we've tried three years in a row for grant funds and we're unsuccessful. And we're at a critical point where the water meter readers, if they fail, will be reading the meters by hand. So we do need to move forward with this project. We try to hardest to get grant funds, but at this point, I think we need to borrow the capital to go ahead and move forward with the project. We do believe we can cut the cost of the project if we use city staff. It's likely to come in about a million dollars less and you'll see a second resolution tonight contemplating the addition of a new building maintenance worker to work on not only this project, but a GIS project and the lead line replacement. So just so you're aware, currently in debt payments in the water fund, we pay a hundred and eighty-six thousand right now annually. We haven't brought a water project fund in on debt since I've been here, so that's been five years and several years before that when I look back. We've been able to use for the water projects we've done on Jackson and Bank and others, grant money in our reserve funds. So financing this plus the Kohockton, which was approved earlier in the year, will add another two hundred thousand to two hundred and forty thousand annually for debt payments in the water fund to make the improvements. The debt of life of this project is fifteen years and the debt life of the Kohockton is thirty years. So I would recommend moving forward. We're really at a critical point where we need to advance this project and put these meters in because our equipment cannot be supported and there's no replacement parts.
Go ahead. Tom?
Yes.
What's the expected usable life of each one of these new meters? Do you know?
It depends on how much water flows through them. They go from anywhere from ten to twenty-five years.
And the reason I'm asking is the new water meter of my personal residence failed and they were unable to read it.
Okay.
So they came in and replaced it this week.
If probably, if it's within the last two years of being put in, it's probably went back for warranty repair.
Okay.
Which more or less is, they just send us, we send it in, they send us a new one.
So what is the warranty period?
Depending on what broke in the meter or what function broke.
It stopped transmitting, so I'm assuming neither the battery went dead in it or.
Two years.
Two years? So do we have any idea of how long the batteries are going to last in these meters?
They're supposed to last ten years.
Okay. It'd be a shame if we spent all this money replacing them and then five or ten years down the road because the batteries are dead and there's no way to replace the batteries in them, correct?
Some of them you can replace. Sometimes we just swap out the heads and send it back in and they send us the head back with a new battery in it.
Okay. Hopefully, they'll last the whole ten years and we won't have to readdress this.
I'm guessing you got a faulty one personally, which.
It was eight years old, so.
Okay.
As a fallback, if we pass the resolution, we certainly are going to keep the old meters, right? You have for a fallback?
Keep the, oh, the new meters are still readable if they, if they don't send out a signal. You just have to go inside and read them.
Twice, so you feel no reason to keep the old ones?
No.
Yeah, I have a question, time follow-up on Councilmember Twitchell's concerns. Is this a reputable company? It has been in business a long time. Because today, the trend seems to be sell government something and three years later, you're gone.
No, TIC sales has come around a long time.
Thank you. Lifetime warranties are what they used to be. The company isn't, doesn't stay in business long enough for you to.
Right, if they sell you a lifetime warranty, they probably won't be here in five years.
Yeah. I'm not believing everyone, but that does seem to be the case in certain respects. I had that experience myself. Anyone else?
But as a last resort, if the battery did fail in ten years, like you said, they could still be run manually.
Correct.
So, yeah, we hate to have to do that, but at least we can fall back on that.
And this will be, this will track better. We'll be able to tell you if we have a water leak tester, we can show you usage. So if you do have a water leak, we can tell you your sprinkler turns on from this time to this time every night. You just don't realize it.
Right. Anyone else? So are we in consensus to move the water meter borrowing to the business meeting on the night?
Yes.
So that happens? Council meeting dates, twenty twenty-five? Have you given a copy of the dates? Does anybody notice any errors or anything? Any questions or concerns on that? So are we in consensus to move our meeting dates to the night for the vote? Make this move. Sidewalk Improvement Project?
Yes, thank you, Council President. The city put out an RFP for grant writing and design services as a combo package back in twenty twenty-three. Lobella was selected to write the grant. This is our tap grant for the Swan Street Sidewalk Project. And there is a design and engineering, construction, inspection proposal. I hope nobody caught my confidential informant on the memo. That's not what it was supposed to say. It was supposed to say construction, inspection. Nobody must have caught it. So we just need approval to move forward with Lobella's proposal. And again, this grant is one point one million dollars for the replacement of ten thousand linear feet of sidewalk in and around the Swan Street area. All the costs came in under budget through their scope of services and I would recommend that we do move forward since we did RFP the project as a grant writing and then design and engineering selection.
Any questions? Any concerns on that?
I should note, and I apologize, that the start of design is roughly December twenty twenty-four. Bid's opening in January twenty-seven and we're not going to complete construction until November of twenty twenty-seven because we are working collectively with the state schedule. So it's going to take a little longer than something our guys will be able to do and run a contractor out on our own timeline, but it will get done and it'll be a very nice project.
So you said twenty twenty-seven?
November twenty twenty-seven.
It's going to be almost three years before.
Correct, yep. So as much as we'd like it to go quicker, we do have to work through the checkpoints and timelines of the grant.
Right. Any other questions on that? So are we in consensus to move the Sidewalk Improvement Project to the business meeting? Building maintenance worker positions?
Yes, thank you, Council President. As noted previously, the city water and maintenance building crews have many upcoming extensive projects where city hired labors will be less expensive than using contracted services. By calculating the all-in cost of a new building maintenance worker now and another coming onboard in twenty twenty-six, the city can reduce the cost of three major upcoming projects, including the meter replacement project, the GIS locate project, and lead line replacements. These activities are expected to span over about a ten-year period for the city. And in that time period, we certainly will have some retirements and can use attrition retirements and can use attrition if need be, once the projects are done, and maybe this crew doesn't have as much of that work to do throughout the city. So, I'm recommending that we do seek council's permission tonight to add another building maintenance worker position to help us get started on water meter replacements and GIS, and that'll lead into having our own personnel do lead line replacement as a cost-saving measure. In your memo, you can see some of the figures Tom was able to provide me, and Tom, if you have anything else to add, please go ahead.
It'll be, besides cost savings, it'd be a lot faster if we do it ourselves.
So, what, tell us, you know, I know what's on here, but tell the public, what kind of cost savings are we thinking we're going to have here?
So, on average, right now, they're estimating $13,000 if we hire out somebody to do a lead line replacement. And with my estimate, if a house sits 300 feet off the road, which is a high number for the city, we would be around $4,000 a house. That's just to replace lead lines from the, from the main to the house itself. So...
So, over cost of the project, we're talking about about $10 million, I thought.
Correct. Yes, that's just...
It might be 19 million to do it, but we can do it and save almost 10 million, you know, over the length of...
Right. And if we replace meters in people's houses, we, it might take us an hour to replace a meter, which is $40 for a person on staff, whereas a plumber wants $265 a meter to replace. So, and that doesn't count, like, we still have to supply the reader itself too. So, so we supply all the equipment to the plumber, and they charge us $265, or we can do it with two people going in the house for $80.
So...
And that's hourly rate and insurance.
So, there was a time when contracting out was more lucrative, but we had to revisit that now. So, you're telling me that maybe under the present circumstances, it'd be better to do it ourselves, have the control over it, and to have the cost savings that's involved too?
Correct. And the speed.
Yeah, the quickness of getting it done.
And knowing the city and being able to take on the projects, you know, a lot of times, city workers will come up and be well-received. Contractors might not be as well-received. But I, I really give Tom all the credit for looking into this and making a determination to prepare us for what we're going to have to face with lead line replacement in the future. And it just makes sense, now that we have the meters, to go ahead and start realizing that savings right now as we do the meter replacement starting in the spring.
How many properties have, still have lead lines to them? Do we know?
We don't have a good estimate at that rate at the moment, but it'll also come down to if they have a galvanized line that's upstream from a lead line, it's considered a lead line as well.
Is that now, or is that what you're projecting?
That, that's what the state says right now. Their new lead law is that there's a galvanized line upstream from a lead pipe, that is considered a lead line, because the galvanized absorbs the lead.
We're estimating 1,500 public and private side replacements at this point are going to need to be done.
Well, we still don't have any other data, is that correct?
Correct.
Well, we have some.
Right.
We don't have as much as we'd like, and we probably don't have enough to do any predictive modeling. So, we have to continue to knock on doors and try to get participation.
Are we going to have enough data to say, to satisfy the state requirements?
We've turned in our, go ahead, Tom.
No, let's go ahead.
You did it. You, you say it.
It, it'll depend on what the computer model says back, on what we put in and whether can predict what we have in the city. We've turned everything into the state, and they thus far have accepted it so far.
Yeah, certainly, many communities don't know where all their lead is, and they're still in the exploration process. And that's what we're seeing all across the state when we go to conferences and talk to other cities.
And also, Tom, how long do you think it would take to complete this GIS data requirement, where everything is located every time? In two years, five years, 10 years?
It could be five.
It takes 15 minutes per valve, once we find the valve in the ground, before it to upload the location into the system. But once it's completed, when we have a water break, we turn off the water. Instead of taking anywhere's up to two to a whole day trying to find the valves to turn off, we'll be able to walk right up and stand on it and turn the valve off, and the water will be outputted in 20 minutes.
So, in other words, the guys are going to have to go off with the exploratory equipment and sweep the ground and look for everything, and then upload it?
Yep. Then they snap the lines to the valves, and then we do the sewer, then we do the streetlights. And we're, our goal is to have everything in DPW fully automated, so you can bring up a tablet, and you can press which, what you want to see, and you can get the history of that either parcel, or that valve, or that line, right there on a tablet. So, definitely, since I've been here, wanting to move forward with this, and having our own folks go out and do the locates just makes a lot of sense.
And if we had a city crew go through and install water meters, how long do you think that would take?
For a number...
Two years, five years? I mean, we have about 3,800 left to do, correct?
Correct. And you're going to average probably six a day per person.
So, it depends on how many we can afford to put out on that installation crew, which is why...
Also, when you're doing the water meters, that would be a time to verify lead pipelines as well, right there at the meter. So, should be able to get some information from that process as well to help with the lead service line later on down the line, right?
Correct.
Any other questions?
I just would say, I, just with the savings you were telling us, and then just coming up to date, I support that 100%. This is a no-brainer.
It's worth trying it. At this point, I mean, if something bogs down, we can address it accordingly, but that kind of savings over that period of time, and having the control and the speed at which we'll be able to do all this, I think that's important as well.
Absolutely.
It definitely looks like a positive outcome if we go forward with it.
Well, we also have to look at the overhead costs too of adding personnel.
Right.
I did some rough calculations, it's $75,000 a year, and that's including benefits. I think that's a low estimate. 15 years, you're talking $2.25 million.
Yep. If I had 3 million in my estimate, I did 100,000 with all benefits all in.
300,000.
Yep. And even with that number at 15 years, our savings or non-expenditure, I hate to call it a savings, is 12.6 million. For those same employees, if they continue on and we don't reduce the number of the crew in the future, at the 30-year mark, we still will have not expended 9.625 million.
But that provides we still have the workload to...
Right.
To justify their, their positions.
And I think we've talked to the union, and they understand that this is, you know, there's definitely work for the next 15 years or so. And in the future, we have to reevaluate that like we do with all positions.
But it's real easy to hire, but it's difficult to dismiss people. Well, we've done it through attrition in the past, and we had, but I think this is worth it though. We contract that out and deal with that contractor cost and increasing costs over a 15-year period of time. Just the time and effort to bid things out, and that's all man labor that we have to use too. It doesn't happen on its own, so...
Oh, and additionally, if we have somebody else come in and do the replacements and things like that, we still have to have one of our staff on site to take pictures for New York State and Spat. So, at the same point, we might as well, if we already have to have one person there, we might as well have the rest of the crew there.
Yeah, just to be clear, though, this one person isn't going to do all the meter replacements and all the work. I just want to, want to be clear on that, that, you know, we're not going to save millions of dollars because of hiring one person. There's going to be multiple city employees, equipment, and trucks, and, you know, it'll, it'll be as...
You'd have to average a three-man crew when it does it, with the addition of the other person in 2026. And then utilizing one person we already have on crew.
We're not coming to asking for both positions, just one at this point, to be revisited as we get closer to lead line replacement.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, so are we in consensus to move the building maintenance worker position to the December 9 business meeting for a vote?
Yes.
Would that get's moved? Audit committee appointments?
Yes. Thank you, Council President. I recommend that the city council appoint the following nominees for the audit committee: Nick Harris, Paul Bataglia, and Laura Landers, with terms to run from 2025 to 2027. Mr. Harris and Mr. Bataglia have served on the committee for several years. Laura Landers is new to the committee, but not new to audits.
Any questions or concerns on that?
Mr. Staley.
He didn't attend the last two meetings, so we decided to choose someone else.
Thank you.
Yep. He's welcome to attend if he has time.
Any other questions or concerns? So, are we in consensus to move the audit committee appointments to the business meeting?
Yep.
Would that get's moved? Assistance firefighter grant?
Yep. Thank you, Council President. The city is preparing an application for the annual assistance to firefighters grant, and would like city council's approval to apply for funding focusing on equipment, training, safety, and enhancement of firefighter efficiency. Chief, if you have anything else to add?
We've, we've been very successful with this grant in the, in the past, and come to almost rely on it in some instances. It's paid for numerous academies, turnout here, which is approaching over $5,000 per person, which we have granted a few second here. Thermal imaging cameras, which we have, are very outdated, radios are renamed, so it's extremely valuable for us.
Any questions, Twitchell?
No.
Or any concerns? So, are we in consensus to move the firefighter grant intent to apply to the business meeting?
Yes.
Would that get's moved? Very good session for real estate. Mr. Beal, would you read it, please?
Thank you, Council President. Whereas Article 7, Section 155, what is the public officer's law permits the listed body of a municipal county to enter into executive session to discuss imposed acquisition, sale, or lease of real property, of imposed acquisition of securities, of sale or exchange of securities held by such public body, and only one of the city will subsequently affect the lien therefore. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the City of Batavia, and upon approval of this motion, the city council does hereby enter into executive session.
Second by, Mr. Byakowski. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Beal?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Richmond?